I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Eric. Gentlemen, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
None.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes from our last business meeting?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Much as I hate to do this, we're gonna let Mr. Rudd kick off this meeting.
Oh, thank you.
He's gotta talk sometimes.
I will. This is a notice regarding the executive session held on Thursday, April 30th, 2015, at 4:00 PM. The Board of County Commissioners met an open session on Thursday, April 30th, 2015, at 4:00 PM in room 408. Upon motion by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Shade, the Commissioners unanimously agreed to go into closed session. The purposes for which the meeting was closed were as follows. One, a matter involving public safety, including the discussion of deployment of fire in public service and staff, and development and implementation of emergency plans. That's under General Provisions Article Section 3-305B10 of the Antited Code of Maryland. Number two, consultation with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. That's under General Provisions Article Section 3-305B8. Consultation with counsel to obtain legal advice. That is under Article Section 3-305B7. The persons in attendance at the closed session were Commissioner William R. Valentine, Commissioner Creed V. Brody Jr., Commissioner Jacob C. Shade, County Administrator David A. Everly, County Attorney William M. Rudd, Paul Kehl, Director of Public Works, and Richard DeBoer, Director of Emergency Services. Upon motion of Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody, the meeting was adjourned at 4:55 PM.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move into our program now. I'd like to call Ms. Dawn Santmeyer. Please come forward and speak to us about National Mental Health Month.
I was here.
The podium.
I'd like to thank the Commissioners for the proclamation declaring May Mental Health Month. Statistics show that one out of four persons in this country at some point in their life experience a mental health issue. Mental health issues can be as debilitating as many physical health issues. For instance, when looking at loss of time at work, severe depression has a greater impact on the lives of those experiencing the illness than many physical illnesses, including some forms of cancer. In an effort to promote positive outcomes for individuals experiencing mental illnesses, our office offers programs for children and families, homeless outreach, a housing program, and case management services to assist individuals with a mental health diagnosis work towards recovery. We at the Mental Health Systems Office are also focused on raising awareness and reducing stigma. This year's theme is Know the Facts, Know Stigma. In an effort to raise awareness, decrease stigma, and encourage early identification of mental illness, the Mental Health Systems Office has been able to offer mental health first aid classes to a variety of groups this year. Most notably, 57 law enforcement officers from the Allegheny County Sheriff's Department, City of Cumberland, Frostburg State University, Frostburg City, and Maryland State Police have received this training. A sheriff's deputy has received an instructor certification and has teamed with staff from our office to provide this training to members of law enforcement. Our plan is to have the majority of local officers trained within the next year. Our hope is that raising officers' awareness will have a positive impact on our officer's safety and our community. Thank you for your efforts in supporting those in our community affected by mental health issues.
Have you got anybody here with you you'd like to introduce?
I have Laura Diller, who is the Child and Adolescent Coordinator, and Heather Haynes, who runs our office, is the office secretary. And I believe Kathy Whitaker is here from Western Maryland Health System. She's the Director of Appalachian Division Health. Is that your correct title?
Yeah, I'm also the Chair of the Mental Health Project for Allegheny County.
Great. Would you all please come forward?
Come one up.
Another proclamation here for you. This is an official Allegheny County Government proclamation. Whereas May is National Mental Health Month, and mental health is an important component of overall health, and whereas the availability of quality mental health care enhances the well-being of individuals of all ages, whereas we wish to publicly recognize the significant contributions of all mental health professionals and extend our sincere appreciation to them. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2015 to be National Mental Health Month in Allegheny County. And witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the seal of Allegheny County, Maryland to be affixed the 7th day of May near 2015. This is signed by all three county Commissioners, Bill Valentine, Creed Brody Jr., and Jake Shade. We appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
While they're making their way to the seat, I will have to, I get this chance about twice a year to embarrass my sister-in-law Kathy and her husband. Thank you. Eric's been my brother-in-law for almost 29 years. And since him and I are so close in age, Eric's only about 10 months older than me. We've been together for a long time, so, thank you Kathy for coming.
Creed's sister-in-law, that is an embarrassment, isn't it? Okay, then we'll move along. Ms. Bee Hemmerich, please, to talk about National Nurses Week.
Hi, thank you so much for giving us this proclamation. This is National Nurses Week, and it's sponsored by the American Nurses Association. And I had been a nurse now for 39 years, hard to believe. I would like to introduce my colleagues, and please tell me, and please tell the Commissioners how long you've been a nurse. We have Angela Spitero.
Thirty-nine years.
And also Michelle Harvey.
Oh, thanks.
Great, thank you. It's held each year around Florence Nightingale's birthday, which is on 5/12. And she was born in 1820. Florence Nightingale was the founder of modern nursing, and she set up the first nursing school in England. This year's theme for Nurses Week is Ethical Practice and Quality Care. In recognition of the impact ethical nursing practice has on patient outcomes and the quality of care, 2015 is designated as the Year of Ethics. Keeping with this focus, the theme for National Nurses Week, May 6th through the 12th, is Ethical Practice and Quality Care. All nurses have a critical responsibility to uphold the highest level of quality and ethical standards in their practice to ensure superior care to their patients, families, and society. Ethics is an essential component of everyday nursing practice across all specialties and settings, and is linked to quality care. The Code of Ethics serves as a guide for carrying out nursing responsibilities in a manner consistent with quality nursing care and ethical obligations of the profession. There's a new blueprint for the 21st century for nursing ethics, and this is made up of a plan for individuals and organizations to implement to improve work environments, health care quality, and health outcomes. An annual Gallup poll that was taken in December 2014 shows that the public has ranked nursing as a top profession for honesty and ethical standards. Nurses encounter many challenges in many settings, and are uniquely positioned to speak up to influence in decisions that will lead to the right actions and to establish an ethical practice environment. Thank you.
And do you have anyone here with you you'd like to introduce?
Yes, Angie Spitero and Michelle Harvey.
And would you all come forward, please? Okay, we have an official Allegheny County Government citation. National Nurses Week, Ethical Practice and Quality Care, 2015. Whereas registered nurses comprise our nation's largest health care profession in the increasingly complex world of health care, and whereas registered nurses are a key resource diligently working for a healthy nation now focusing on increasing delivery of primary and preventive health care. And whereas registered nurses are an indispensable component to provide quality, safe, and cost-effective health care services, and thereby help to improve the lives of all individuals. And whereas we wish to publicly acknowledge all individuals associated with this admirable, life-saving, and life-enhancing health care profession. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, proclaim May 6th through 12th, National Nurses Week in Allegheny County, signed by all three county Commissioners, Bill Valentine, Creed Brody, and Jake Shade.
Just hold them in your hands. Couple of photos here with the group, and then one solo with Bee for a University of Maryland publication. Final one. Thank you. And now Commissioners, one with Bee for University of Maryland publication. She has her doctorate. This will be a nice little photo, hopefully. Never say never. Thank you.
And I guess I'm gonna speak just as quickly on that, since my wife is a nurse and my daughter-in-law is a nurse, we thank you for all you do, we appreciate it. We got a gentleman in the back that we want to welcome to our meeting this evening. We got former Garrett County Commissioner James Rowley here. Thank you, sir, for attending tonight. And if anyone wants to see him, please attend to Fensel's spaghetti dinners. Jim is always there working, and we appreciate that.
No unpaid commercials here, Jim.
It's very good, I will put that plug in for him, it's excellent, so.
Okay, now I'd like to introduce longtime friend, Mr. Bill Atkinson, Appalachian Regional Commission Program Manager. He's had a little step up in his job description.
Gentlemen, thank you for giving me the time tonight. I just wanted to come in and kindly formally introduce myself. I have not replaced Alf Feldstein, as everyone has said. That cannot be done, I have just assumed his responsibilities.
Well, thank you for that.
As you know, Alf retired in December. In mid-June, I was given the responsibilities to do the Appalachian Regional Commission Program Manager. That position is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the Appalachian Regional Commission in Maryland, which covers the three western Maryland counties. Maryland receives about 1.5 million every year to do area development projects. That is spread amongst the three counties. We are in the process now, and it's on your agenda tonight, looking at projects for fiscal year 16, because it is on a federal fiscal year. The federal 14 and 15 is as far back as I've been able to get so far through the files. We're in good shape in Allegheny County. You all had six projects that were funded in federal fiscal year 14. Four of them are completed, two of them will be completed in the next couple of months, so you're way ahead of schedule on all those. Gentlemen, who does this for you all, David Nedved, does a wonderful job, not only in putting together all the applications and working with the applicants, but also working with them to continue through the process of getting the applications in, getting approved, and also getting the projects done on time. ARC is under some new leadership as far as how they're gonna be handling things, what types of projects they're gonna be funding, as far as what they're emphasizing. So I have met with David and let him know that in the next couple of years, there are gonna be some changes. There is gonna be some changes in the way things are funded. There is a lot of money that lays on the table from year to year from projects that just don't get done on time, or don't get started on time. So there's gonna be a very high emphasis on getting projects underway and funding projects that are ready to go. You all, as you can see, do a good job of doing that already. For fiscal year 15, you all have five projects. They are all been sent in. One of them was approved today. It was geochemistry from Frostburg State University, so that was approved today. An announcement was made. Three of them are at ARC already, waiting for them to approve them. One of them is another one underway, and that's the fiber for the two high school, or two schools down at Humbard and Cash Valley, so those are underway. And you do have a local access road that ARC also gets funding for. Maryland gets about $3 million a year to distribute through that. Your ARC-funded project for that for this year is still at ARC being approved. We'll thank again David for that. There was a lot of questions on that project. ARC federal co-chair is scrutinizing local access roads extremely. Let's say very difficult to get those approved. He is not wanting to see these as just a repaving project, of just roads that need repaved, and understanding that communities need that. He doesn't see that that's what the local access road is for. So David was able to supply us a lot of good information about why that road is needed out there, what jobs it will maintain, and what jobs it can create. So those type of data was very helpful in getting that approved. We hope to get that approved within the next couple of weeks for that. I will tell you that ARC at this point for federal year 16 is in the budget. It's in the President's budget, and it was also approved by the House on May 1st, so it has now gone to the Senate. It is funded at 95 million. That is a little more than what we've had in the past. However, out of that 95 million, 70 million is for area development projects, and that's level funding for what we had for the past year, two years actually. The remaining part of that is $10 million is set aside for those areas in central Appalachia for broadband. We are not part of that pot of money. The 15 million is a new pot of money that has been set aside for what is being called Power Plus, and it is basically to cover those areas that have been hard-hit by the loss of jobs because of coal. We again do not qualify for that funding at this point. However, we are trying to work with the federal ARC to try to get some money set aside for studies, because even though we haven't been hit hard by loss of coal jobs, we all know that that's coming in the future. And there's some things that we would like to look at and be prepared for as far as retraining or for anything else that may come along, when and if that does happen. So we're hoping to get that in, but again, this is all proposed, none of this is approved. Don't know what it's gonna end up being. I would also like to thank Senator Cardin. He has put in a bill, along with some other sponsors, to authorize, reauthorize ARC for a five-year period. As everyone knows, the federal government has kind of been going on these one-year reauthorizations that really keep us not knowing what we're gonna do from year to year. There is a reauthorization, five years, for $100 million per year for those five years. It is still in committee, it hasn't moved out of there yet, so we don't know what's gonna happen with that. But again, we're hoping that Senator Cardin and some of the other senators and congressmen in the ARC can push forward with that. Other than that, I look forward to working with the county, working with David on the projects in the other counties. We've had some preliminary meetings. Each year, the state has to perform a state strategy statement. I have already prepared that statement for this year. It will be reviewed by the State Department of Planning, who has to sign off on that before the governor does. ARC again has changed that a little bit. It used to be a 50-page document. It is now to be under seven to eight pages, which is good for me. I didn't have to do a 50-page one, I did a seven-page one. But we also have to set aside in that every year what the state is, wants to see the projects focused upon. In putting this together, we had looked at what Tri-County Council was able to do with their study that they did of over 800 businesses within the region, and what those businesses felt were the needs for economic development. So our next strategy statement, and again, it will not affect for this year, but moving forward, will have some of those specific areas that we would like to see funded with ARC funding. And they go into the, basically the same things we've been working on, and if you look back over the years of what our money has been used for, the last couple of years, it's tending towards these type of projects. And they deal with tourism, they deal with health care, they deal with broadband, and those type of projects, and those are the ones we are gonna look at. There is still funding gonna be available for the local access roads, again, at 3 million for the state of Maryland, so we hope to continue with that program also. So that's where we're at with the program. Again, I hope to move things forward, we're working to try to change that after we get the state strategy adopted. There's a four-year plan that has to be adopted by the governor. Has to be done within 10 months once he takes office. So I have until October to get that put together and down to the governor for his signature and sign off on. So we working with the three counties on when we put that together, and what types of information and projects and strategies that we would like to have in there. But it definitely is gonna be a little more focused, even though any project that meets ARC goals will be looked at. We are gonna have a little more of a focus on projects to where we can get to a little more, hopefully, betterment of the region with this type of money. It's such a limited pot of money, but it makes a big difference in our area. So with that, again, just wanted to reintroduce myself to all of you, and say that we're here, you know, to help you with this. And if you have any questions, I'll gladly answer.
Since we do such a good job of getting our projects moving, do you agree we deserve a bonus in the amount of money we are going to get this year?
You know, we see how that works. We try to look at these and try to be equitable across the three counties. Once the three counties rank their projects, as you all will be doing tonight, each county does that, those projects are then sent to myself and to Tri-County Council. We then meet and put the project package together, which ranks all the projects to see which ones will be funded. We consider a lot of different things when we look at that, but I will tell you in the future that projects that are ready to go are definitely gonna receive a little more points towards moving up on the criteria list when they're ready to go and have their match in hand, and can move forward quickly spending the money. Everybody's getting a lot of pressure for having too much money laying on the tables, and still asking for more, so.
Bill, how much do the three counties usually get combined?
We have 1.5 million for area development, so we, you know, divide it up, but there is some money that comes off of there for administrative fees.
Sure.
It's usually around 400,000 to 500,000, depending. And sometimes, some counties give. In the past, I know from working with Al, there's a lot of give and take. If there's one big project that someone needs, we've done up to a 700,000, 800,000 dollar project in one county before. If it's a, you know, real need, and the counties all get together and decide that. So there has been money that goes back and forth. And again, it depends on the quality of the projects coming forward. Some counties might get 200 or 300, some might get 4, 5, or 6. So it does vary. I mean, in last year's fiscal year 15, Washington County had one project that was funded. Now, it was a large 400,000 dollar one, but again, they only had one project that they pushed forward. So it really does vary from time to time. We do set aside $150,000 out of that for what we call consolidated technical assistance money, and that money is used for doing studies or plans or other things that have been done. We've helped fund the Cumberland Economic Study, so other things like that.
Gotcha.
When it's a smaller 20,000 or 30,000 dollar project, we have some funds that we have set aside just to do those type of planning studies, so that they don't have to try to compete with, you know, $200,000 sewer projects. It's hard for you all to rank something that small high enough. So what we're gonna try to do in the future is get them included, though, in your rankings, but rank them in consolidated technical assistance ranking. So a little change, hopefully, again, not for this year, since we're already this far into it, but in future years.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into our public hearings. Mr. Bennett?
Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, last week, we presented a balanced $84.5 million budget in our preliminary budget, and the next two meetings are for public hearings, so tonight, a presentation, just simply a chance for public comment if anyone signed up. Or if you have any additional questions.
Didn't find a big pot of money anywhere since last week?
I looked, nothing.
Okay, well, that's my only question.
Nothing. Even Woodmire doesn't have anything. At least they can't find it.
That's like saying the attorneys don't have anything, so we're not there either. I guess, do we have anyone signed up for that, Bill?
Is this where you want to make your comments, Mr. Wilmot? You're signed to talk about ARC funding, or?
Well, I didn't know I had to sign up for his. I signed up for it at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
I was just wondering, why do we have a $46,000 increase on the annual salary this year?
There actually, there isn't, that's actually flat from last year. $360,000 off the menu.
The paper I got, it went up $46,000.
It's incorrect.
No.
No.
No, it's flat from last year.
The book you gave me.
It's not.
That was from the prior year that you were looking at on that one.
2014 to 2015?
Yeah, that was the prior, the budget we're talking about now, the 2016 is the same amount as the 2015 budget. It's flat.
There's still an increase. The two different numbers aren't the same, there's a $46,000 difference.
That's because back in those years, we combined two departments into one, and Sheldon controlled.
2014 average to 2013.
That, that was the increase at that time.
Correct.
Your budgeting is a year ahead of time, I think that's where you're getting confused. We're talking 2016 budget now.
I'm not confused, I'm just taking what I read in the report.
Yeah, but you said it was 2014 and 2015.
Yeah, 2015.
All right, we're talking 2016.
More than 2014.
But this is the 2016 budget. This is the 2016 budget we're doing right now.
I'll be happy to sit down with you at some point if you like, and we can talk about it.
Thank you, Jason.
Sure. Thanks, Jason.
I signed up for you.
Okay. Okay, Jason.
That it?
Good enough.
All done, thanks.
Okay, now we'll head to first on the five-year capital improvement program.
Is he gonna lose state loose things to be up for writing inside?
No. But he does.
Engineer, I tell you. Five minutes, is that all he said?
He has, he said three minutes and 14 seconds.
Already starting with the drugs.
There you go. Your time's running out.
Commissioners, okay. David's giving me four minutes and 30 seconds to go through this year, 15 seconds more than last year. So before you, this evening, I'm gonna go over the next five-year of the capital improvement plan for the county. Just to, let me go over a little bit of housekeeping here. We consider a capital project greater than 25,000 with a life expectancy exceeding 10 years. We generally begin the process in January and try to adopt the budget the same day with this capital, usually the end of May, first part of June. There's our committee voting members, Mr. Everly, Paul Kehl, Jason Bennett, Jeff Parkley, and myself. We also have some other folks that are involved in the meetings, Mark Yoder, Utilities Division Chief, and I know Pam Diaz helps out a lot with the meetings, and somebody that I couldn't do this without his help, and that's Dan DeWitt. He really keeps track of all these numbers for me. And with this crew, it's like herding cats. So this evening here is what we're gonna be bringing forward, we're gonna be recommending your approval, and you can see the adoption date there on the 28th of May. Go over how this is formatted here, there's a lot of information on each sheet, you can see that there's gonna be 15 pages that look like this. Beginning over on the left, top left, what this shows is the department or agency, for example, Allegheny College of Maryland, and then the project listed, whether it's a new project that we received between January and now from the agency or department, whether the county has committed any money to it prior to fiscal year 16 that begins on July 1st, the money that is requested in fiscal year 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and beyond. Let me just point out that the dollar figures that are shown are for county funds, county funds only. And so just to really show the example of this, you can see the Allegheny County total over on the right, and then there's a project total. And generally, a majority of these projects, we try to combine with state grants and loans, et cetera, federal grants, federal loans. And so the key, the key point is over on the far right tonight, and so... And so these are the committee's recommendations that you're seeing here for you. So the first project is a technology building project for Allegheny College of Maryland. We actually made action on this last July where the timing of C I P projects for the college didn't really align with the county schedules, but we had enough information at that point to go ahead and recommend supporting this project, and that's phase one of the project, which will make A D A improvements to the technologies building, address an elevator and also some bathroom issues there at the technologies building. Future phases for the technology building project are all captured in the second one listed there. We don't really have any more information on this project at this point. We're going to be working on that in the years to come to really define the scope of that project. So you can see that we're going to be looking at borrowing some money, borrowing money to be able to do a lot of these projects that are listed here this evening. So focusing on the ones looking at funding for fiscal year 16, moving on, Allegheny Fair Access Road's been in there for a long time. Again, looking for ways to be able to fund a secondary access road to the fairgrounds. Caretaker's House, we recognized this project a couple of years ago. Last year, we actually obligated money towards the project. However, we haven't done anything with it, but we're looking at trying to do something this coming fiscal year. We also recognize that we need another good set of bathrooms out there at the fairgrounds. I know our maintenance department did a great job on the bathrooms that were replaced there by the grandstand last year, about two years ago, sorry. Board of Education project, first one doesn't need any introduction. We borrowed $9.2 million for that project, and we've also committed $500,000 of open space funding. So therefore, 9.7 is shown over there in the far right. Many of these projects listed below, I don't really need to say anything about it. I mean, Braddock Middle Roof, well, it's a roof replacement at Braddock Middle School, so on and so forth with the other schools listed. What you'll see, though, Braddock Middle is anticipated for construction next year. And so typically, we've been able to match, put the local match towards these roof projects. With Paper Gaming, Jason will be able to go into that further with the second part of this presentation here. But we're going to be looking at borrowing money to be able to put a match towards the project. The other ones are future projects listed. Some site work necessary at Braddock Middle, Washington Middle, Frost Elementary. These are not new projects. They've been in the C I P. I believe they entered last year, perhaps the year before. However, they're future projects that we're looking for funding down the road.
That's a lot of money.
Our own buildings. We've tried to keep on the radar screen the opportunity to place some bathrooms that are needed up there at the depot. Nothing that we're trying to do this year. County Office Complex Improvements, we kind of bundled a couple of different things that were in the C I P for years into just one. This calendar year, we're going to, we budgeted to be able to do a little bit of carpet work, some necessary A D A improvements to the building. Anything there beyond, we've got some things targeted, but we'll just have to see how the budget works out. Bud mitigation projects through the Department of Public Works. In the past, we've had a 50-50 drainage improvement program that's been utilized now and again. Unfortunately, though, we haven't been able to find any money to contribute to that program for next year. Tree planting, Frostburg Stormwater retrofit. These projects, through Dan and Angie, they've combined, they've gotten grant money for these. So you can see that there's really no county funding, but they're listed here. We have to show capital improvement countywide, however, there's no funds to be put towards these projects. However, Bowling Green and Crescent Town Drainage Repairs, as a result of not getting any federal funding, we were hoping for through N R C S to be able to address some of the issues. As a result, last June, from the flood, we're looking to be able to go out there and make some needed repairs to the area as a result of that flood. So we're recommending $250,000 of Pego money. I believe that was discussed earlier in the spring as well by the commissioner. Moving on, you're going to see many new projects here listed, you know, Department of Public Works, the roadways and bridges. There hasn't been many projects for five years. They haven't magically gotten better. So what you're seeing here tonight is a long list of projects that we've got to, we've got to be thinking about working towards solutions. You're going to see the word replacement. That's not necessarily a given. We're going to try to make sure we're flushing out these solutions and see if they need to be replaced or if we can rehab them. So just for estimating purposes, the information that I have, I tried to make sure that I'm showing kind of worst-case scenario for some of these. You're going to see the bond mentioned there on the third one down, Water Cliff Bridge Replacement Project. The other ones are future. We are starting some preliminary work on the bridges out at the North Branch Industrial Park. We're going to utilize some money through economic development to be able to take care of those two bridges. Some of the smaller projects, like the one listed down at the bottom, the bridge rehab work there for Pleasant Valley, Pleasant Road, we're going to try to do through our road budget. Two other bridges out in the same neck of the woods, you know, we're looking at major projects. We're going to have to borrow money to be able to address some of the needs of these bridges. Town Creek Road is one that we're going to try to do, probably within the budget and probably wait until fiscal year 17. Bridge 116, I gave you a long dissertation more, a couple, oh, it's been about a month ago now, two months ago, about where this project needs to go. I'm working on a revised scope right now with a consultant to bring this bridge at a five-year design storm. Future projects listed next, another bridge rehab project, and then some repair projects as a result, again, of the flooding that occurred in June. We're going to try to make some improvements on Bowling Street. We're looking at perhaps an improvement on Brent Road. Fur Tree Lane, we really suffered to brum us some damage in June. Valley Road Drainage Improvement is future. We shouldn't be getting involved in at this time. Maybe we could push down. Projects by tapping into our state aid money that we get without any of our highway user money. We need to, we're trying to do our best to keep our roads in good shape. So we're going to be putting our local match through R B F and a 418R is a capital Pego account that we use for some of these, some of these smaller projects. Very popular program that residents who live along O P roads, other public roads not maintained by the county, we're recommending funding that program once again at 25,000. Last year, we did not fund this program. It is very popular. We've probably received six to 10 phone calls already about the money for next year. There's a need to replace our salt dome over here behind us at our garage here in Cumberland. Future improvements perhaps for our Old Town Garage. We need maybe look at a new site. And continuing on with trying to get back on the pace where we were several years ago with replacing some of our equipment at the Roads Division is our last one listed there. Trying to fund that through the Roads Division budget. I'll quickly go through some of these. The sewer and water are coming up next. The key thing about the bulk of these projects, I mean, these projects are funded by grant loan, and they're funded by users in that district. So sewer customers in Bedford Road, we try to combine, I mean, maximize our grant for these projects, keeping the loan low, and so we're not really affecting rates all that much to be able to go out and make these necessary repairs. We've really chiseled away at this long list over, I mean, the last seven years. I've just watched, I've been a part of a couple of them in trying to take, take care of the worst first and really doing a great job of that. So no A C funding for a lot of these. The one listed there below is a new one, evaluation of a wastewater treatment plant in Locust Grove. I've written down there $5,000, and we're going to try to provide that through in-kind services, some of our surveyors, our surveying assistants or engineering assistants here in Public Works. Transit, future projects. Again, water projects funded by users of the system. There's a lot listed there. You're well aware of some of the ones that's been in the, that you guys have had meetings on there along 36 and Sunnyside, Farrellville. We're underway in Bowling Green here on Crescent Street just this week. Continuation of some water projects. Next page, economic development, three projects listed. One new one is we're trying to utilize some A R C funding for the ones that apparently are real hard to get now to restore some of the pavement out at North Branch Industrial Park, our most popular industrial park. Access Road, creating a new access road up at the Frostburg Industrial Park. I believe Jeff is, we're on the final stages of that and hopefully advertising for construction very soon. And Shell Building at the Barton, Barton Business Park is the last one there. That funding is kind of, has been in place and has been in the C I P for a couple of years now. Emergency Services, Dan's Rock Property Purchase, that funding that's shown as prior was committed, I believe Dick DeVore is just waiting on the state grant funding to go towards that project. Radio console replacement. This is for the 911 Center, and this is replacing the consoles up there. It's been on the radar screen for several years to be able to take care of this project. You can see that we're looking at borrowing. This is a bond project. Alerting System, this would be replace fire and E M S alerting system countywide. Working with Dick DeVore here recently on this. We're just trying to gain some more information on this project, and we're looking at doing it perhaps in 17. The one below, I believe gentlemen were updated on earlier in the spring also by Dick DeVore. It's out there. We know it's coming. Don't have much information about where we could, how we could get funding for it, or really how much it's going to cost. More to be determined here in the future. I T, we've continued to kind of limp along with our phone system here in the building. And so we're going to consider looking at our options to be able to replace the phone system here. Fiber conduit, this is a future project. When the need arises, when we're doing a water sewer project and we're out there trenching, we try to get conduit in the ground perhaps for the future extension of fiber in certain areas. The second phase of AlcoNet, we're looking at funding that one as well. Library, the available library renovation, that'd be a future project, South Cumberland Library. The renovation of it is actually underway. We're working with an architect now and hoping to move forward to construction. I know state funding for this year is, has been obligated. We're going to be trying to get state funding again next year and then go to construction beginning in July of 2016. And the last project this evening, just this week, just with Phil Rudd's help, we finally secured the right of way for this project. I received the certification from State Highway today, and we'll be going forward, trying to get our final plans approved, get our federal highway authorization, be able to advertise the project, hopefully here, I would say in the next two months, and maybe go under construction before the snow flies. Couldn't have done it without your help, Bill.
Oh, gee, thanks.
Spectacular.
I'll be at the ribbon cutting.
Thank you. So that's it in a nutshell. I don't know if I did it in four minutes and 30 seconds, but.
No.
I've trimmed it, I've trimmed it down significantly. It's on the website.
It's just pizza.
That's right.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Pepperoni, pepperoni mushroom, man.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
So the next step would be approving this on the 28th, unless there's any changes.
Very good.
Thank you.
And I want you and Paul to know how appreciative A C M is of all the help you've given them on that technology building. I hear it every time I'm out there.
Well, that's great. Yeah, Paul's done a great job.
Guess you're up next, huh?
I'm part two.
Okay.
It says, Adam took all my time. I could just stand here and tell you we don't have any money and cancel the whole thing. Will that work?
Negative. Because there was two particular projects on there I've got great interest in.
I think we've got a plan for everything Adam's shown, so if I get mine up here, we'll be all right. So as Adam talked, two parts of the C I P every year. First part is the projects. Second part is how do we fund those projects? So what you have here tonight is our debt affordability component, where we think we're at, what we think we're going to have to borrow in the future and how that fits into our plans. And we'll keep it relatively brief. We think, we've worked pretty hard, the C I P committee, over the last few months, trying to tighten up these projects to make them fit into our plan. So tonight, we'll kind of show you where we think we're at. First thing you're looking here is our debt affordability model. We've used this for many years. It was devised by our financial advisors years ago. It serves as just a guide for us. Want to focus, first of all, on the bottom. You can see the highlighted numbers. Those are our debt affordability numbers. There are caps, there are maximum rate that we have limited ourselves to borrowing. And you can see as you look to the right, none of our estimates have us close to any of those, thankfully. I will say, some of those amounts are rather large, our maximum amounts are rather large. So if we're ever in that territory, we're going to be in relatively bad shape. So I'll just hit a couple of things here. One of the things in the debt affordability model is our population. Recent trends are showing our population on the decline, and as a result, that limits your borrowing power. So what we're showing is a population that's going down about 0.7% annually over the next few years. It's an estimate, but we've put that into our projections. You'll see here, as you look on the bottom, at some of our ratios, we're in relatively good shape, and we actually compare rather well with the national median on debt per capita, and we do better than the national median on our debt service as a percentage of the general fund expenditures and revenue. So relatively good shape here. And as Adam mentioned, we've got a number of new projects on the way that'll add to our debt in the coming years. So if you look at the middle of the page, we've lined up new borrowing. You can see the $9.2 million for Allegheny High School during fiscal year 15 that we've already borrowed. From some of Adam's projects that he was talking about, we've planned a tentative borrowing of $6.5 million that we would maybe do next, late next winter to spring. Adam and his crew are going to work on that over the coming months to see if they can't tighten up some of those projects, confirm numbers on some of those projects before we go to borrow the money. But as he mentioned, these roads projects, they don't fix themselves. We haven't done much with them the past few years, so I think the time is now that we move, lump some of these projects together so that we can save money as we borrow. And then if you look a little further to the right, you'll see $7 million in fiscal year 18. That right now is simply the radios that are identified under what Dick DeVore briefed you on last month. Right now, that's our best guess of what that's going to cost. There's no state funding, as far as they know, for that right now. So at this point, our only option would be to borrow that. We certainly can't come up with that in cash. So we've identified that as borrowing as well. Here's just, I'll just spend a minute on this. This is our existing general obligation debt, and I just want to kind of touch on two things. One is, since 2010, we've actually retired $12 million worth of debt, which I think is really good. We obviously, over the last few years, limited our borrowing to really almost nothing. So we had, we did have a nice chance to pay down some debt. You can see it took another spike this year as we borrowed for Allegheny High School. As we move to the right, by 2024, really, the only debt we'll have left at that point is for Allegheny High School and a little bit of other. So we've positioned ourselves pretty well. We've been aggressive in our borrowing recently, as far as in terms of years. New Allegheny High School was only a 20-year borrowing, which is relatively aggressive for a high school. We're going to continue that as we go forward. We think that's the way to maintain our debt is by being aggressive in our repayment, and we'll focus on 10- or 15-year borrowings in the future. So this next slide here simply takes what we just showed you and adds in what we're forecasting right now as far as new borrowing. So what you're seeing there in blue would be new borrowing that we've identified. So the first one would be a borrowing potentially in 2016 for a majority of the projects Adam talked about. And then in 2018, you'll see another spike where we've identified borrowing for the 911 system. So thankfully, we're nowhere near the peak. So thankfully, we're nowhere near the peak we were at in 2009, you can see, and I'll talk in a minute, I don't think that's a place we can go anymore, I don't think we can afford it anymore. So I'll spend a little bit more time on this slide, and we've certainly seen this one in the past. This is our general fund estimated debt service payments, and you can see a green kind of squiggly line there in the middle. We've adjusted our debt service goal over the past few years, we've brought it down as a method to maintain and balance our budgets as our revenues have dipped on us. So back in 2011, we made a move to take that goal from five million dollars down to four million dollars. We succeeded in that, as you can see, we have everything below four million dollars. As we did our budget last year, we talked about moving that down to three million dollars. I think three million dollars is probably a reasonable goal for us going forward. You can see in seventeen and nineteen, we would spike over that slightly, but I think in the long term, three million dollars is a manageable goal for us. And as I've said before, if we go above that, we're going to have to find new revenues to pay for, pay for that debt service, and at this point, there's no real new revenues coming into us. The only other alternative would be to cut additional services, and I think we've trimmed them about as far as we can go. So all in all, the projects Adam talked about, we're working to tighten it up a little bit, but I think they fit in our long-term plans. We're just going to have to be really careful as we go forward not to incur too much more debt. You can see we just, we just don't have room for it at this point. So, long story short, I think we're in a relatively good position, but that being said, we're going to have to be very cautious going forward that we don't quickly get out of a good position. So tonight, that's our, simply our recommendation based on the projects that were presented, open it up to your comment at this point. I guess if you don't mind, just one more thing, Adam mentioned gaming monies. Paper gaming has really dried up on us over the past few years. We used to be able to knock out a lot of small school projects with that money. Now we can really only afford one small school project a year, and we've already committed those funds for the next two years, so really there's no new projects that we can handle, so we're going to be at the point of borrowing. So something we're going to have to watch for. That's it, unless you have any questions.
That should do it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
You have seventeen seconds, Mr. Nedman.
Adam, use your time.
Hello, Commissioners. Notice was given in the Cumberland Times on Saturday, May second, twenty-fifteenth, fifteen, that the Allegheny County Commissioners would sponsor public hearings and on the following: to obtain views of citizens on community development, economic development, and housing needs; to offer citizens the opportunity to discuss proposed projects; to provide input on other needs to be considered; and to offer citizens the opportunity to review an application for the funds for the second phase of the Bowling Green Water Project; and finally, to offer citizens the opportunity to review the progress of the following projects: the Savage Pumping Station Generator, the Frostburg Water Treatment Plant Generator, the Housing Buyout and Flood Plains, the Bowling Green Water Project, the first phase of it, the Moss Avenue Water Project, and the Rawlings Water Project. I provided on the website a background for these projects two weeks ago, and also the handouts available on the table in front here. And at this time, I'm asking if any citizens would like to ask questions or comments about the subjects that I just mentioned. Commissioners, having heard none, I'll close these public hearings.
Okay, we'll move into the A.R.C. federal fiscal year 2016 priorities. We'll give you just a little bit more time.
Commissioners, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Atkinson for saying kind things about me, and I do appreciate his help. As, as we discussed last week, the priorities for FY16 for A.R.C. were presented to you, and this week, what I'm asking for, what we're asking for, staff is asking for, is your approval to send that priority list now on to Tri-County Council, along with the preliminary project descriptions for those projects.
Gentlemen, do I hear a motion to move along with our priority list?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We made that painless for you, didn't we?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
It's all yours again.
Like a bad penny, I'm sorry. It's the last fine.
As long as we can spend it.
A finance guy saying there is such a thing as a bad penny.
I didn't say what key it, I just said it was a bad penny. Oh, next item on the agenda is Resolution fifteen-nine, and it would be authorization for one million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollar Maryland Water Quality Financing Loan, and it's to cover the Braddock Run Sanitary and Rawlings Water Projects. Specifically, it's to cover Braddock Run Phase Two and Phase Three, and Rawlings Water Phase Three. The Rawlings Water Project is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred in a loan, and Braddock Phase Two is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in an M.D. loan, and Phase Three is for a total of one million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, and five hundred thousand of that amount is loan forgiveness. So as soon as we execute the documents, it's essentially like a grant, it's forgiven. These are all twenty-years loans, repaid by the users of the system, just like Adam mentioned, there's no county general funds in this, it's all, it's all users. Rates will be approximately one percent, we won't know exactly until we close. Closing should be in the next month, two. And these were originally authorized with bond bills five-dash-twelve and six-dash-thirteen. So tonight, we're just looking for your approval to allow us to close these loans.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to move ahead with Resolution fifteen-nine?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
City of Frostburg requested a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for, I shouldn't say it that way, they are proposing to use a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for improvements at DeClarysville Eckert Community Park. Crested Town Civic Improvement would like to use program open space for a playground at their community park. With the Board of Education, this is the last installment, it's a smaller amount, about seventeen thousand dollars to make the commitment of five hundred thousand dollars for the Allegheny High School complete. We didn't have, we didn't get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year to pay the second half, so we're adding a little more. Not a little more, we're taking a little out of this year. The town of Barton had two projects, parking lot paving in Meadow Ball Field, seven thousand dollars, and a trail at the Meadow Ball Field for eleven thousand dollars. Town of Westernport also had two prioritized projects, they had an announcer's booth for seventy-one thousand, and Ball Field Lights at a hundred and nine thousand, both of those for the Maryland Avenue Ball Field. The county is requesting thirty thousand dollars to, to get some advice, some consulting on facilities, future facilities for the fairgrounds. And the Old Town, the community of Old Town, they have two sponsors in there, we have two different parks. The community center requests twenty-seven thousand for playground equipment and tennis court resurfacing, and the Youth Sports Commission requests ten thousand dollars for sanitary, new sanitary facilities at the community park on Cemetery Road in Old Town. All told, these come to like four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and this is based on an estimate, I don't know the exact number, what we're getting from program open space, but it looks like we'll have about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So we're going to have to consider these and see which projects we can fund for fiscal year 2016.
Commissioners, as we've done in previous years, David makes a presentation each and every year, we give you an opportunity to consider all the requests. The staff comes back within a couple of weeks and makes a formal recommendation for your consideration, and then shortly after that, we will ask for your approval. Thank you, David, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Anything else, Dave?
That's it.
Mr. Rudd?
I'll be.
You've already said enough for tonight. Jake, do you have any other comments?
Yes. First, thank you, Mr. Atkinson, for coming, we look forward to working with you with the A.R.C. stuff, and I know you've already started, done a good job, and you know, tonight we talked a lot about our capital improvement and our debt going forward, and I totaled it up, it was something like thirty million over the next five years, which is a lot of money. So when the county's tightening its belt, I would hope our capital budget would reflect that, because you know, that, it's just a lot of money to be spent on some worthy projects and maybe some projects that we shouldn't be getting involved in at this time, maybe we could push down the road. So I would hope that we would continually, continue to be fiscally conservative when it comes to this budget. Thank you.
Great. Yes, sir. Well, first of all, thank you, Bill, we did enjoy that, and I, I will tell you this, I have known Bill for thirty-plus years and you're funnier than Al, honestly. So, no, we was certainly glad that you got that position, so straightforward. While you two gentlemen are both sitting here, I want to thank both of yous, because you've been involved with something, and I know that a letter went out today, that both of you guys were one from each different direction. To the new Secretary of State Highway Administration, because there's a entrenched battle again on two projects in Laval that State Highway has decided to pretty much stop. One of them is moving forward, one of them is not, and the reason I say that's why the news media is sitting here tonight, and I most certainly hope that they would take a chance and even ask one of our engineers what they think of some of these new ludicrous regulations that the State Highway is trying to throw at us, such as having to put in a drainage system for a sidewalk on a piece of property that's, that's flat, that's going to take a wall to elevate a sidewalk so you can drain it back towards the property. I mean, this is, this is unbelievable, and the reason I say this tonight is because all I've heard everywhere I've went this week is how people are upset that they pay taxes, and this and that, and this and that, and it seems like we always, the three of us, get the blame for nothing coming to this area, and our staff works diligently to try to get everybody and anybody we can in here, but there's a brick wall just constantly being put in front of us. So gentlemen, I know you took the first step today from two different directions, so thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you, Creighton. I'll make mine very short, you know, we took the step of creating the Allegheny County Opportunities Scholarship just a little while back, and today I got a new list of students at Frostburg University, they now have an additional fifty-two students taking part with the Opportunity Scholarship. These students probably would not be in college if it wasn't for this scholarship, waiting for an additional list from ACM, and I truly think this scholarship program is going to, to pay off big time within the next few years. When we started this, Allegheny County had a fantastic total, thirteen percent of our residents had a bachelor's degree or better. Be interesting to see what that total is in the next five or six years with students, local students being able to afford to go to Frostburg and go to ACM now, so that's something we have to keep tracking, fellas. Okay, we have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Wilmot.
Kenneth Wilmot, Alibis, five-one-three Ford Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. I'd like to address this to the county commissioners and everybody concerned, plus Mr. Atkinson on this Allegheny, or the Appalachian Regional Commission, as your program manager. I'm against the eighty-six thousand dollars that you people are going to give to the animal control shelter. Here we are, the poorest county in the state and in the, around the area, and we're going to pin in a building that's going to put local vets out of business, and local pet shops. There isn't a pet shop that has sold a cat or a dog for five or six years. Now then, the shelter has, since day one, they've been bringing in somebody from out of states to do low-cost neutering. There is a Fair Trade Act, people are not supposed to be undercutting each other in the, in the business, and I don't think it's fair. I think if you're going to contribute money, you should not be putting money into something that's going to put another business out of, out of business. There should never be, eighty-six thousand dollars is a lot of money. Now take for instance, a young man, a young girl coming up through the college wants to be a vet, what chances does she have of being a vet in Allegheny County, when we're putting in a two-and-a-half million dollar building and furnishing it on the taxpayers' money? It don't make sense, we're trying to get people to come in to Allegheny County, trying to create businesses, and here we're going to drive them out by contributing money. In the last four years, almost four million dollars from this sort, and this grant that ever has been poured into the county, Animal Control Shelter, nothing to show for it. The past year has proven that they do not know how to manage the place, they're dysfunctional. In Bel Air, they, they had six weeks and over three calls to come out there and pick up them dogs, they never did it. And for over two years now, I've been trying to get them to do something about the cat hoarder up on Owens Mountain, and at the last meeting, for the last two years, all I've been told is it's under investigation. So I don't think we should be putting any money more into the shelter. I think they should be running out of business, and I appreciate if you would not put any more money, of our taxpayer money, into that shelter, especially through the, this program that you lead, Mr. Atkinson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no one else signed to speak this evening. Reminders, our next public business meeting will be May fourteenth, here in this room at five P.M., and watch for news releases for our budget meetings and whatnot. We hope to see everybody back, have a safe ride home.